The College Thompson Select Board Meeting to order January five, two thousand twenty-three from the Donald A. Russell Meeting Room. Would you all please rise for the plug of allegiance?
What allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic where we stand? On nation under God, municipal, liberty and justice for all.
Patty, would you call the board?
I will. David Douglas.
I am here.
Marie Brilliant here. Drew Lyons here. Matt Nixon.
Brother.
Roman Knox.
Here.
And at the table we have our assistant town manager, Mark Walz.
Thank you very much, Patty.
You're welcome.
Town managers report.
Good evening, everyone. Dog licenses were due to be renewed by December thirty-first, and there's a late Vietnam by January thirty-first, so remind people to come in and please do them if they haven't done them already. Fire, police, and public works all worked long hours related to the December twenty-third and twenty-fourth storm. We had several road closures, but no major moves for clothes. The fire department responded to two incidents of trees falling on homes and assisted the homeowners. Luckily, no one was injured. Public Works was able to treat the roads at the appropriate time. The salt didn't wash off and used the wind to get the roads dry before the temperatures plummeted. The warming shelter was open due to power outages in town. The state will be modifying the speed limit on Route one ninety-six between Mary Mead Bridge and point two seven miles north of Bypass Drive. So basically, sorry, Village Drive, halfway between Village Drive and the Route two oh one intersection is going to be thirty-five. The rest of it's going to be fifty miles an hour. Some good deeds were done by our public safety officers this holiday season. The Thompson Fire Association adopted a local family for Christmas, provided gifts, and a Christmas dinner. And then on December twenty-fourth, the Thompson Police Department partnered with Hanaford Brothers to conduct a build the cruiser event to raise food donations for the Western House. Citizen donations actually filled three cruisers with food donations and money of twenty-nine hundred forty dollars in cash, which was turned into Hanaford gift cards for the Western House residents. And then finally, Monday night, we have our tax-acquired property workshop at six o'clock P M right here.
Excellent. Any questions? New boards, public comment?
I'm just curious, Pierre, the Robin Brooks. I live in forty-seven Ivanhoe Drive. Good evening, everyone. I just was curious about the the speed limit on one ninety-six. If you could just move that again. I wasn't familiar with the landmark.
So from the Mary Mead Bridge, we're across the U.S. Canyon River, starts fifty there. And it's going to be continued fifty past bypass drive, past Village Drive where the Highlands is, and then about halfway to the Route two oh one intersection is going to drop down to thirty-five miles.
All right. So we're talking about the bypass. I'm not about best of the Thompson family.
Correct. Nothing's changing there. The state did a traffic study and decided to pay, needed to lower it a little bit, so they're dropping it.
Very good. Safety's good. Thank you.
They have a lot of comment. Also, tonight, on any of our items, if we have speakers, if you could write your name, there's a sheet that's been placed up there for Patty, and then we will have. Go name an address. Name an address on that sheet. Any whoops. We have no hands raised. Okay. Any correspondence? Anyone? Wait room?
I have one from Jan from Garrett Walk. Gary and I appreciate your vote this past Thursday. You understand the real concern that the neighbors, me and the proposed rezoning have. Also, your vote shows that you have respect of a comprehensive plan. We are very concerned that if this goes to town meeting, people are going to be voting on developing the present focus site and not about the rezoning and the negative effect it will have on our area town. Thank you for your service, Janet and Gary Thorpe.
Thank you. Just the corrections.
Yeah.
I was gonna make note of that, Gary. We can read it, but.
No.
Okay. No adjustments? All right. So here we go. This is the interesting one. Consent calendar, approval of the minutes. So don't just say move it. Approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting, December fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. So. Couple things. We got, so Patty sent out the initial meeting minutes, which are in the pack, and we, she also received updates for spelling corrections and found that there was also an error in the identified zones in the map that Crocker submitted in November. They had the wrong zone names. Dan Flag had submitted that, and that's what Matt had brought up. A correspondent. So that's, I think, covers the correspondence. So in my opinion, so I'm going to put this out. In my opinion, the name changes, and there was one other clear, one other, with the town code section had an extra two, which Patty correct? Correct. We, there was an extra two in the code section. Was from that meeting on December fifteen. The incorrect, the incorrectly identified zone names was not, what was presented was incorrect, but it would not be rectified, in my opinion, until it's part of a public meeting tonight. That the incorrect zones wouldn't have been part of that last meeting. We'll address it tonight when we talk about the timeline. Does that make sense? That I think we, we make the changes. We accept the meeting minutes with the name spelling corrections. But as far as the map being changed, that needs to be viewed in a public meeting, which in my mind would be tonight. And then we would move forward and we'd accept it at that point. The, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think exactly.
So to put that in a motion, I look for approval of the
What he said.
Minutes in the regular select board meeting, December fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, with name spelling changes and one correction, removing a two from the town code.
Section.
Section. That's my motion. I'm going to stop there before I add too much to it. So.
Sure.
Okay. Motion and second. And then we, all those appear. One upset. Okay. And then when we get to tonight to discuss, we'll, we'll acknowledge the new names on my map. Oh, we're on the new, very first one, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-three zero one. Consideration any appropriate action on accepting a grant for two thousand eight hundred eighty dollars from the main municipal association for the purchase of a five gas meter. Chief Reader speak to this.
I don't have the speed. Basically, it's through MMA. Come up, please.
What she said.
Hello, I'm Deputy Fire Chief Jerry Pino. My boss is in another meeting, and I drew this draw. He says hello. So basically, we're updating our gas meters on four pieces of apparatus. The ones we currently have are just outdated. You can't get parts for them. So we're replacing them. With that said, MMA has what they call safety grants, and they're a hundred percent grants, so the town doesn't have to put any money towards it. I filled out an application, went through it with Derek. We sent it in, and we were approved for one meter. That meter's been ordered. And basically, we just need you to accept that money from MMA so that we can put it. When we turn it into finance, we'll put it towards that meter purchase. Also, I hope to come back in April with the same kind of a request, because they have, they basically do this every, every quarter. So gas meters are right now one of the top things that can get accepted. So I've already submitted for a second one. So hopefully, we can update all our meters through this process. That's what my finger cross is going to be. So all we're asking tonight is, is that you accept, you allow my boss, Chris, and town manager Derek to accept those funds. And there is no monies that the town has to offer towards that. That's a one hundred percent what we applied for, what they are going to give us. And I also have in your packet, you have a picture of the, the new meter, if you'd like, and it's the five gases. We've actually added. One of the gases that we actually look for is for firefighter safety. You know, when it fires out and you see it's in the buildings doing what we call overhaul, it's still not necessarily safe for firefighters to work without our air packs. These new monitors have that ability to tell us if we can have our air mass on or they should be on. So with the upgrade, we're also looking out for firefighter safety and improvement in the future.
Chief, with these gas meters, like once a year, testing the updates? Is that how, is it?
So the newer ones, I'm not sure on these. I will tell you, we went with the M S A. The M S A five gas meter, it's what a lot of apartments are using. I've used them in other apartments. They're the best. I believe the calibration on these is every couple of months. And then I, I believe I've heard through the, the, the wind that you were on the fire apartment a few days ago.
Yours.
So you remember, like, you used to have the can and the thing, and you jumped up in, and it somehow calibrated itself. And well, now these, you actually just put into a docking station. You touch a button, and it's done.
So it's not sending it, losing, okay.
Yeah. And we actually have one of our members that takes care of all the meters, because all this also, not only does it have to be documented for main bureau labor standards, it's checked daily on our truck checks. Obviously, these meters are used for carbon monoxide, propane, anytime what we call smells, anytime someone has a smell. These meters are actually, so we use them quite a bit.
Any questions? And we want to do a motion.
I move that we allow for the purchase of the Altair five X gas detector. That's listed in the agenda packet and accept the grant from the municipal association.
Ten seconds.
Motion seconded. All those in favor? unanimous. Thanks, chief.
I appreciate you guys' support. If you guys are all set with me this evening, I am going to check on the crews with the, the roads and stuff. Is there anything else you need from me?
I don't think so.
Have a good night. Everybody drive safe.
Thank you. Twenty-three zero two, consideration any appropriate action on accepting a donation of two thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars to the General Assistance Heating Fund. Let me just read this. On December thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, Crocker Construction made a generous donation in the amount of two thousand three hundred fifty dollars. So I just realized that. So is it twenty-three fifty or twenty-three thirty-five?
Just check it out.
Twenty-three fifty. So. Twenty-three fifty to the Thompson Heating Program, requesting select board accept the donation to be applied to the Thompson Heating Fund. So just so everyone, it's not what's in the agenda of twenty-three thirty-five, it's twenty-three fifty. Extra four, yeah. Yeah, maybe. Motion? Discussion. That's true. Kind of just read it. Motion and second. Yeah, I'll second. All those in favor? Look at us go. Twenty-three oh three, consideration any appropriate action on the proposed timeline for the Crocker Construction LLC request for a zone change. In the packet, we have the staff has gone back, as we had asked, to go back through and come up with the timeline of what this process may look like. The first step is something that will happen the January twentieth, twenty-sixth. So I'm going to go through this, just so we get it. The proposed timeline is January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. If we make the motion tonight, the planning board would set a February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three public hearing at the Mount Arat Forum on a zoning change. As soon as the planning board schedules the hearing, but no later than February nine, notice of planning board public hearing must be posted according to two-two-five seventy-nine of town code requires ASAP thirty dash A M R S A four-three-five-two-nine A requires notice of at least thirteen days prior, which is where February nine comes in, of an hearing. Twenty-three seventy-nine of town code requires at least fourteen days. So that's where February nine, sorry. February ninth, at the latest, notice of the planning board public hearing will be mailed first class to owners of each parcel to whom taxes assessed, who is one in the district to be rezoned, two, who abuts the proposed, who abuts proposed rezone, or three owns property within two hundred feet of the area to be rezoned. Municipal officers need to file affidavit with the clerk describing notice given. February eighth and fifteenth, notice of planning board public hearing, including copy of map indicating property to be rezoned, to be published in the Times Record. Thirty dash A M R S A subsection four-three-five-two-nine B requires published notice at least twelve days before hearing, and again, at least seven days prior, so there are two public notices in the record. Two-two-fives, two-two-five-seven-nine of the town code requires at least fourteen days. So again, we revert to the fourteen day number, not the twelve. February twenty-third. So all that leads up to just the first, the public hearing before the planning board at the forum at Moner High School six or six-thirty mark. I just realized the January twenty-sixth.
We get the room reserved in six, the hearing's twenty-six thirty.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. Public hearing at the high school at six-thirty. Following that public hearing, the select board decides whether to vote, whether vote will be at a town meeting on May thirtieth or as a secret ballot on June thirteenth. If to be a secret ballot, board sets a public hearing at Orion Theater, Moner Middle School for X date in March.
And we've now heard you can have March thirtieth, Thursday, March thirtieth, Thursday, March is Thursday.
Five babies. A vote proposed zoning change, which would be March thirty. Alternatively, select board could decide to hold the public hearing and make final decision on the vote slash manner after the public hearing. So by March.
That your immediate March second would be when you decide either we're going to have the hearing on the thirtieth, which would get us moving in the direction of, say, a referendum to June. Or you could decide that you're going to just put it on the warrant, in which case you wouldn't need a separate, you wouldn't need that March here, the thirtieth hearing. You just cover this as well as everything else. It's your warrant, it's your town meeting warrant.
So March second, we determine whether we would do the thirty, need the thirtieth.
So is that your two decision points you could choose? So on March second, you just, if you decided March second, we don't want this to go forward at all. Doesn't have to. You could decide on March second, we're going to send this forward to a vote of one sort or the other. Or you could just schedule your public hearing for, in front of the select board, for March thirtieth, and then at the end of that meeting, either there or at the one at the beginning of April, then you need to make a final decision on how the vote's going to go, because we have to get paperwork to the state by the thirteenth of April, or I think it's fourteen of April, actually. But if we're going to do a referendum, we have to have that nailed down by the fourteenth of April. So if you were going to do it at a town meeting, then it doesn't have to have that people, then, yeah.
By April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, if it has not been previously done so, the select board determines whether vote will be at town meeting or on June thirteenth in connection with the school budget validation vote. So the two that I didn't just read, March is written essentially to us. But April fourteenth, by ballot in connection with June thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, budget validation vote notice must be filed with the clerk sixty days prior to the election. If it is to be June thirteenth, they are voting, but secret ballot vote early voting would begin on May fifteen, two thousand twenty-three. So this is when we first talked. We are looking to move this forward, and part of the motion would be whether to request the planning board to hold the public hearing. The inflight, Mr. Flag had given us, had given notice that somebody map was incorrectly marked. It's been fixed. That's why we didn't approve it in the minutes. This is where we are acknowledging that the changes to that map has been made. So now it's been in a public hearing with the correct names listed in the zones. So that's this here. Did I mess anything up? Does anyone feel that I confused by reading it out loud? Okay. So in my opinion, this is just a simple housekeeping matter, and we are setting a timeline that I'm looking for directions. It's not any sort of, there hasn't been an agenda, there hasn't been an item presented, anything new. I'm not looking for public comment. This is where we are setting our timeframe. What does the board say? I'm looking for a opinion.
It really is a housekeeping piece, but I mean, given the conditions tonight, and that folks did show up, I'd be okay with hearing stuff. But again, I mean, we, like you said, this isn't anything new. This is just a continuation of our conversation from last week, and I think the bigger the, the bigger thing coming up would be the public here. And certainly, the March second meeting would be something pretty critical, but this, tonight's vote, because you haven't read the motion yet, but the proposed motion is really just to direct the planning board to have a meeting, or excuse me, to have a meeting on certain dates, right? And that's the only thing I'll be voting on tonight. The, the rest of the schedule that was listed is, in my opinion, a little cart before the horse, because we haven't gotten past, even the public hearing, let alone loading on whether or not this proceeds. But I also understand why you'd have to wait up, because, I mean, there are.
Correct. This wasn't prepared for the attention that you make on these decisions tonight. It was just to make sure that we've got the timeline right, so that we haven't by accident.
So in summary, I'd be okay with hearing people.
So the only thing I will say is that there is going to be public comment. It is only on the timeline, because that is the only thing this agenda item is on, is the timeline. So if you have a comment about the timeline, not the project, that's fine.
I have a comment on the cost of that, I guess.
Make sure you write your name and announce your name.
James Temple, fourteen Colville Road. My only comment would be when you got, and I'm not sure whether it's in statute or not, on who you have to notify. This affects a lot more people than others. And I would like to see the notification go out over a wider group. I don't know how you go about that, or if you can do that.
So we've had this on various other items before on why we follow the letter of the rule is so that we don't ever make the mistake and we miss somebody. If you follow the letter of the law of what's there in the ordinances or what's there in the state law, we know that we have notified everyone that needs to be. If we were to expand it out X amount of feet from the zone, then it becomes, well, I'm four more feet away. Why wasn't I advised? So this is, it's, it's the way to keep things clean. But just so you know, that's how we've always done it in the past. We've had same thing. There's been many other issues where people have, you know, maybe you should go further. Don't disagree or agree, but if we have a standard, we know that we live up to that standard. And, and there doesn't become the, what about me?
And the publication covers people.
Yeah, correct. And, and if it goes further, as we said, any publications anywhere, there, there, the entire.
I don't know anybody that reads the time track.
We are, it'll be on the website.
A lot of people listen to WC and me, which always makes sure to cover these things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lawrence Graham, five seven seven River Road, also a member of the current member of the planning board. So there are a couple of things regarding the process that you have indicated that as, as of the last meeting. By the way, I apologize that it was not all that coherent last meeting, because I just made a two-day round trip from Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania, to pick up my daughter from college. So I was a little tired. But anyway. Couple of things with regard to the process. One, if you're sending this to the planning board, you have indicated that the role of the planning board is just to hold a public hearing and not to actually do anything else with regard to this proposal. And as we had talked about previously, there are three methods for doing a zoning change. Select board, which is obviously where we are right now, the planning board, and by petition. And as far as I know, there's not been a petition, with five percent of the voters signing that petition. So if you go forward with this, then you, as a select board, are making this your proposal for a zoning change. This is not a crooked proposal for the zoning change, because you are initiating the zoning change as the select board. And you aren't just setting things up. This is, because like I said, there's not a certified petition. If you say, yes, we're going to go forward with this, then essentially, you are finding that this is in the best interest of the town and that you find this in performance with comprehensive plan, because it's your zoning amendment. And by finding it should go forward, then you're also saying we don't need.
I'm going to stop, because this conversation right now has nothing to do with the timeframe. You are addressing what took place at the last meeting.
Yep.
No, it's nothing to do with the timeframe.
I'm addressing that you should not be even doing the time. You should be, actually, I think you should be doing a motion to rescind what you did the last meeting.
Okay. So that has nothing to do with the time.
No, correct. But you should not be voting to go forward with the timeframe.
Okay.
Because here again, there are many problems with that. You are, you might, like I said, you might as well just as you know, under the planning board, had started this whole process a couple of years ago, and there were things going on with the planning board, and that just died. So I'll stop there, because I said, I don't think you should be voting to have the timeframe and go forward. Which is soft here. The other thing with regard to the timeframe is you should be providing information to the planning board as to what you were looking for the planning board to do on, on both on the twenty-sixth as well as under the public hearing that you are staging.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Sorry, Larry, did you write your name?
Yes, I did. Steve Pro, eleven Colville Road. Just wondering when the public will see in the timeframe what the plan really, what, what that's really going to look like. The rezoning and really what the project will fully look like. I didn't hear that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Larios, two Berkeley Lane, Thompson, Maine. I know of a lot of people who moved into our neighborhood from away, as far as Skowhegan, other parts of the state. They moved here. They knew what the zoning was at the time. They knew that we had good, clean, fresh air, free from asphalt dust and smell. They paid a lot of money for the property. And I believe that Cropper has alternatives of all the money they have.
We're again going to just address the timing. That's before.
So that's, I'm against the proposal. That's what, I'm against the proposal. Which is not on record. So now it's.
All right. You don't end that line. The board. Any comments, anything? Questions?
Now, just reiterate. What I said earlier, um. In my opinion, this is housekeeping. And. Uh, we've already passed something that said that we're going to be sending this to public hearing, um. I think to answer the gentleman's question about. Uh, plans, um, that was something that we were pretty adamant, or at least Dave and I were adamant about at the last meeting, about having something like that at the public hearing, because otherwise. Yeah. I mean, I obviously can't speak for the board, but that's not gonna sit well with me at all, um, and, uh, no surprises would be good. So that's just to reiterate there, and again, tonight, um, as far as I'm concerned, I'm voting upon the date. Uh, the meeting has already been approved by the board to replace.
Yeah, I take your point one step further and say those plans have to be out in advance of that meeting.
Yeah, I think, and that's on. That, that if they, they don't go in advance and they show up that night with it. That's not a good sign, I, I would say, I agree with the both of you. That.
There is billion, I don't ask Jeff, we haven't. An absolute set here, so. It's not like the day.
You'd like to give me a date, I'll come and give it to you.
Two weeks.
Two weeks prior to the hearing. Would you want that in the motion?
Um, I'd see probably not in this one. Okay, it's, this, this motion actually provides some information Mr. Brand has asked for, it's. Tracks the, the town ordinance, and it gets very specific about these specific lots are gonna be rezoned, um, and it has a map, which is also contemplated in the, the statute that needs to be included. Uh, but I can certainly contact the folks from Crookery Construction and say that you guys are expecting that their. Plans to be made public, uh, or their presentation two weeks before, so people have a chance to review it, and then. I know their intent, um, for sure, was to do a presentation that night, and I didn't ask them, are you gonna release it early, but I'll tell them you guys are expecting it two weeks before.
I, I absolutely agree that. The sooner that the people have the information to study and look at it, you know. Have it a short time and be broadside anyway. And. Firmly. Express that.
Certainly. But the more I think here, Mark, this is, sorry. I think the more I think, I think it's got to be. It's gotta be part of our motion. I think just. That they're not, it's not more than an expectation, it is, it must be.
I agree.
I think adding the date maybe right at the end. Something that says, and. What are we looking for, I guess?
Well, especially I'm looking for. The plans that will be presented at the hearing. Without any edits.
Yeah, I think at the last meeting, um, maybe we'll say they didn't have any idea about what the cycle looked like, but if you go back to their twenty-eighteen presentation to the planning board, they have a pretty. Decent layout in several iterations, so I think they could probably provide some pretty specific information about what they plan to do.
I will say. If we start requesting that. We start doing the planning board's job, because that action is gonna be the job of the planning board. To approve that stuff. We need to have. Their presentation materials. Available two weeks prior. I, and if, and if it's not enough for people, because. The more information, the better, right, for any, any project. And if. So that's a balancing act, they gotta handle. They've gotta accept that risk or reward, how much are they gonna say, but I think. If we start mandating that they say that. The plan is gonna be X amount of feet from here. That's not our, that's not our role. This is a zoning change.
But there's nothing.
But I think we should.
Bidding them doing that.
No, they could do that, but I think the presentation that they will make.
Presentation which should be made is the hearing, that will be made, they don't actually be made available two weeks prior. Okay. And that is the sense of the end.
All right, so I'll use the big font now. Any other discussion points? I'll give you a second. Well, Mark wants to say. Mr. Chairman. Like, eh. In the, Larry. Oh, I'm sorry. And, and maybe you, you covered this, uh. One of the brand again, uh, but maybe you covered this in your discussion before the meeting started. But in the. We haven't discussed anything. Prior to an open public meeting. Okay. Well, I think there was a, there's a correction. Necessary on the proposed motion that came out. And, uh. Mark's. Uh, memo of January three.
You're probably gonna point out, it says rural, where it should say, um, suburban, right?
Yeah, halfway down through that, it says.
We talked about lot seven, right?
Which is currently zoned rural residential.
That's fixed.
That's what we're gonna read now, okay, I thought I heard you saying. I'm fine, thank you. Be good. Motion to request the planning board to hold a public hearing pursuant to and in accordance with the procedures of section two-two-five-seven-nine. Of the Tops of Town, Town of Tops of Municipal Code of Ordinances. On February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two at six-thirty P M at the forum in Moneride High School. To take public comment on the request of Crooker Construction LLC to rezone one. Town of Tops and Tax Map R two. Lots one. One A. Two. Seven. The portion which is currently zoned suburban residential. Ten. Thirty-seven B. Thirty-nine. Forty, forty-one. In the portion of lot ninety-six that lies between River Road. And a southerly extension of the eastern bound. Of lot forty across lot ninety-six. From suburban residential to limited residential. Two. Down on Tops and Tax Map R two. Lots thirty-seven and forty-three from rural commercial. Rural commercial use to limited industrial. And three. Tax map R two, lots three. Three A. Three B. Four. In the portion of lot ninety-seven, which lies between lots three and four. From suburban residential to industrial. All as portrayed on the attached map dated January third, two thousand twenty-three by Boyle Tanner. And to request. All presentation materials will be made. That will be made. At the hearing. From Crooker LLC be made available two weeks prior to the hearing. To the public. Well, I think they need to get them to us, and then we need to make them public, right?
We'll put it on that one, sir.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-two instead of twenty-one.
So nobody second my motion. The call, right? Yeah, so much for your big. So I would like to amend the motion. Legally, do I have to reread it all? Yeah, I guess I do, well. Now, whatever, I'll do it again, I don't want any of this coming back. No, it's the right thing, though. Uh, motion to request the planning board hold a public hearing pursuant to in accordance with the procedures of. Section two-two-five-seven-nine of the Tops, Town of Tops and Municipal Code of Ordinances. On February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. At six-thirty P M at the forum in Moneride High School to take public comment on the request of Crooker Construction LLC to rezone one. Town of Tops and Tax Map R two, lots one, one A, two, seven. The portion which is currently zoned suburban residential, ten, thirty-seven B, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one. In the portion of lot ninety-six that lies between River Road and the southerly extension of the eastern bound. Of lot forty across from lot ninety-six. From suburban residential to limited industrial. Two. Town of Tops and Tax Map R two, lot thirty-seven and forty-three from rural commercial. Used to limited industrial. And three, tax map R two, lots three, three A, three B, four, in the portion of lot ninety-seven, which lies between. Lots three and four from suburban residential to industrial. All is portrayed on the attached map dated January third, two thousand twenty-three by Boyle Tanner. Additionally. The board. Expects presentation materials. Will be made available. At least two weeks prior to the hearing. By Crooker. Construction LLC. Anything else, anyone else?
He got on dates.
I thought you had your hand up, I was gonna say. That's the motion, do we have a second? Motion and seconded. All those in favor? unanimous. You know?
Uh, no, I don't need it, thank you.
Twenty-three zero four, consideration, any appropriate action? On appointment to the planning board, this evening, we interviewed Andrew Munsey. And Douglas Thompson to the planning board, both fine gentlemen. I'll make a motion to, is there any discussion before I make a motion?
Douglas.
Douglas Thompson. Make a motion to appoint Andrew Munsey.
Say again.
Any other discussion?
Just rationale.
My rationale?
Yeah.
I was gonna get rationale.
Oh, I, I can't, I don't.
I was just saying, like, I mean, he's clearly expressed interest in this for over a year now, he's gotten the. C-pitch underneath his, uh, his belt and his district commission, he knows what he's, uh, up for, um. And, uh. As far as we know, he's very. Which wasn't ordinary.
Yeah, I mean. Mine was, I think he won the interview for us, so, I mean, you put me on the spot, but. Go ahead.
I just think they both were excellent candidates and. Evidently, we're gonna go with Andrew, which I'm very pleased with too, but both were excellent, and I hope the other gentleman. Pursues. Another committee in the town of Tulsa.
So I made a motion for Andrew, do we have a, did we get a second? Matt seconded it?
Yes.
All those in favor of Andrew Munsey to the planning board? unanimous, five zero. The next up is executive session. Executive sessions will be twenty-three dash zero five. Enter into executive session pursuant to one M R S A, subjection four oh five, six C to discuss. Acquisition of real property, additionally, we will have twenty-three dash zero six. Enter into executive session pursuant to one M R S A, subjection four oh five. Six C to discuss acquisition of real property. That is my motion to enter executive session, second motion and seconded, all those in favor?
Thank you.
You're gonna have a same. unanimous.
Return.
Okay.